That's the budget there you're looking at.
We only use these now, huh?
Or do you have anything to add or discuss with the consent agenda?
Not for the consent agenda.
Okay. Are there... Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda, other than how to find it? All right, then, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion of that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to items for information with administrative reports.
Yeah, I've got a few things before we get to the administrators. Just a reminder, you have your CSIP goals in front of you, and we'll try to keep our conversations based on those goals, as always. Wanted to recognize today is Patriot Day, and we certainly want to remember the events of 9/11 and in honor of those heroes from that day. And I'm sure we all remember where we were on 9/11. In education news, Missouri's really involved right now in something called the Success Ready Student Network. And it's a big... It's a big wordage for a... It's an attempt for schools to try to give an option for standardized testing. So it's a really big push. Go CSD, a group that we're a part of, is a big part of that. They've met with legislators, and some of the schools that have jumped on board early actually have a waiver from the state that they're going to be able to do that this year to kind of pilot it and see how it goes. But, get some pens.
Keep them coming up.
There are.
Hey, you're alright.
Anybody else need a pen? So the idea is, it's taken a student, seeing their growth, and trying to individualize it a little bit more instead of the traditional standardized testing that we're judged on so many levels. So, trying to figure out a better way to figure out the APR besides just putting all of it on standardized testing. So it's probably a couple years down the road, but just wanted to throw that out there that, you know, currently there are some schools in Missouri that are working towards an option for standardized testing being an assessment on how schools are graded. So, kind of an exciting thing for those of us who've been in education and kind of cringe at standardized testing being a measure of how schools are performing. So this would be a good alternate to that. We'll be having a facilities planning meeting on Wednesday. Some of those guys back there and myself will be working on the best use of our resources towards facilities and kind of some long-term planning, and I'll be bringing that back to the board hopefully in October with some ideas that we come up with. But that's just kind of a follow-up on our retreat and some of the things that we talked about. We're going to look at that as a small admin group and then bring those to you. But that meeting is coming up on Wednesday. MSBA has a fall regional meeting. That's the 27th at Richards. If you're interested in going to that, let me know. And we'll try to get a suburban and go to that meeting. They have those occasionally, but that's just a regional meeting. Then, of course, the state conference that some of us will be going to will be November 2nd in Kansas City. Had a few questions about ESER. I know that's kind of a follow-up from our time at the retreat as well. Kind of some numbers and where we're at. So currently, we have $773,000 left in ESER funding from the federal government that must be spent by October of 2024. So that's, as of today, that's how much money we have. We have probably, and these are all estimates, okay? So it could raise, but right now, the estimate is about $120,000 left on our training center construction. And then MoDOT, B-building renovation, to do all of that movement that we talked about, it'll probably be, you know, $200,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. So that leaves us with about $453,000 left. So in that facilities meeting on Wednesday, we'll be talking about that as well. I don't want to commit to, you know, spending all of that because those top two things could still go high, and we want to make sure we have money to complete those first two items. But obviously, there will be some substantial money there that we have that we can allocate towards whether that's some learning... Some of it needs to go to learning loss. We already committed a lot to learning loss, but if there's other avenues that we can look at, we want to do that. And then that'll go into that facilities planning that we're doing on Wednesday as well. Just kind of wanted to give you an ESER update. Any questions on that?
So the MoDOT and B-building renovations, they're coming, that's higher than we originally had anticipated?
I estimated it higher, just because...
You moved the needle higher.
Yeah, I just have doubts that we'll hit it where we were.
Originally thought.
Right. Things have gone up. It's just, that's kind of the nature of estimates, they go up. So I want to make sure and give us wiggle room for those things. I don't want to shortchange us on those renovations.
And you're going to set on, you're one to set on those funds for a little while until you get those projects wrapped up, which I think is a wise move there.
Ideally, yeah. But we do, we have to have them spent by October 2024, and that could mean that we have a contract with somebody. You know, we don't have to have the checks out. But, yeah, that's the basic idea, right? That's your ESER update, and that's all I've got for my administrative report.
Any questions concerning any of that? All right, then, let's go on to Mr. Smith. Do you want to tell us about our school?
Supposed to be over here, right?
Thank you.
Where do we go?
Are you in the lecture?
I'm okay here, I just got to be over here. We were just talking about enrollments, and our enrollment for August was 416 students, which I believe last year we were at 389. So we're up about 25 students there. And you got that report with the numbers there. Two of the numbers, the 100% attendance and the over 95% attendance. We're still figuring out how to pull those numbers from Infinite Campus. So we don't have those yet, but we're working on that. Today, we had a PD day. In the morning, our senior project committee met, and we also had four teachers that presented to the rest of our teachers different things. I had asked teachers what they felt comfortable, if they were asked to give a 15- to 30-minute presentation, what was the topic they felt comfortable presenting? And they sent those to me, and I went to four of them and said, "Hey, you want to present on PD day?" And they said, "Sure." And I think those went very well. They did a good job presenting. I think they were well received by our teachers. And the idea for me is, we do a lot of good things, and I want our teachers to be comfortable presenting things. And hopefully, we can get them not only presenting to our teachers, but maybe going to conferences and presenting there because I think we do a lot of good things. We want to be able to share those things. Of note, with school starting, our new CTE programs are off and running, and it's been pretty neat to see those take off. Our construction class has been very busy and will continue to be busy with projects on campus. Mr. Knapp's class, Mr. Wickens' class, they're learning new things all the time. They're very active, and it's been good to see those programs take off. Fall sports, of course, are in full swing. We had homecoming. I didn't see any of you at the dance on Friday. We'll make sure that you're aware of the next one, and you're welcome to come to that. We got a new club starting. Did they meet last week or this week?
Book club. Uh, they, we met this past Thursday.
So we got a book club that's been started. Maddie, I think, was kind of one of the people heading that up. Mr. Kuhlmeier is our faculty person there, and so it's another thing. That's one of our goals that we talked about with the group you'll see in a minute, is try to get more students involved in things. So that's one of our focuses. Things coming up, Picture Day tomorrow. Make sure you guys are ready. Aggie Olympics on Thursday. If you haven't been a part of that, get out and be part of that. It's an interesting thing. And then, we will host a Region G school safety meeting here on Friday with representatives from schools throughout Region G talking about school safety issues and things. And that's through MSBA Center for Education Safety. And I think we started those last December, and we have one each quarter. And so far, nobody else wants to host, so we've been the host for each one of those. And it's good conversation, and we can help each other out in the area of school safety. I think that's it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank yous. Uh, Dr. Johnson?
So, last meeting, I brought up the fact that we had talked with teachers, middle school teachers, on our retreat about things that had worked last year, things that didn't work. And so I didn't have all the answers to follow up with that, so I'm going to start with that, if you will. I know we had some questions about that. So we'll start with some of the things that teachers mentioned that didn't work last year. Was a rushed lunch break. Communication, not just admin, but altogether. Our advisory time that took place during the day, they felt like didn't work. We needed to update some playground equipment. And then repeat students in ISS were some of the top things that showed up on our list of things that didn't work. And so, at this point, I'm happy to say that we've actually addressed most of these already. With the change in our schedule, with the block schedule, we were able to lengthen lunch. We've got some more stuff on the playground, the playground equipment, things like that. So we've been able to address most of those. Some things that worked, that we're continuing, were to reward the kids with ticket time, relaxed atmosphere, good morale, Bear Store, consistency with discipline. Open communication was one of the things that did work. And then student activities, they liked the snack cart. Last year in the middle school, we did teacher-to-teacher observations. We plan on doing that again. The teachers were really scared at first because it put them out of their comfort zone, but at the end of the day, they liked it. They learned from each other. So we will continue that. They liked vertical team meetings, and then they also liked the administration being visible. So those were some positive things. So I thought I would mention those things first, didn't want to forget that. Our attendance at the middle school is 369, and you'll notice that I broke that down by grade level there for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. I won't go over that. Right now, we are, our fall sports are in full swing. Volleyball this week versus Ava, I guess, tonight. And then again tomorrow at home versus there. And then the 14th, our middle school football is playing Mountain View here at Little Springs. Today, we had our PD day. We met in vertical teams in the morning. We also met in grade-level teams to discuss RTI and lots of planning stuff. And then we also had a presentation from a couple of our teachers over Study Island, which is a program that some of our teachers have been using, but we now have it available to all four core subjects at every grade level. So we wanted to make sure that they knew the hins and outs of how to use that and that type of thing. We've had a great start to the school year. We had open house and fifth-grade orientation on the 18th. And then here more recently, on the 7th, we have held our middle school pep rally and map recognition. And if you haven't heard about Joe Bob, you need to do some more looking into Joe Bob and find out about who that guy is. We have several new things going on at the middle school this year. With the block scheduling, the lunch shift's changed a little bit. We've added the salad bar back, which we're all excited about. And then, so that's kind of changed our overall schedule there in the middle of the day with our recesses and things like that, but it's all worked out pretty good. We had to do a little bit of adjustment there the first couple days, but we've kind of got it down pat now. So also in the mornings, we changed a little bit how students enter the building. Up until 8 o'clock, all students go through Grimes. Parents come through the indoor over by the Hicks House where you can actually buzz in, and we now have a greeter over there. So if somebody comes to that door, we were getting, I mean, that door was just buzzing all morning long. And so now, if it buzzes, we have somebody right there to greet people, especially parents, you know, people that we might not know, and see why they're there and help them get to the right spot. So that's something that's new. Admin, we're doing a hall sweep. We've started that first block every day. The teachers have a piece of paper, and there's three things that are kind of non-negotiables that kids have to show up with. And they have to be prepared for class, and they have to have their planner. They have to have their notebook, pencil, all the things that they need for class, and they have to be dressed appropriately. If they are not, they just have a sheet of paper. It's a real quick check, kid's name. They throw it out the door. Mr. Cockner and I sweep the hall. We grab those kids out, find out what's going on, give them a warning, make sure they have their stuff, and then they go right back to class. We just want the kids there and prepared so the teachers can do their job. So that was one thing that, we actually, I picked that up from the, I think it was a conference in Hot Springs that we got that from. So we're trying it. It seems to be working. We also have a culture and climate committee in the middle school that's going to help take care of a lot of things, including the culture and the climate. But they're also going to help out with socials, just all kinds of things that they're going to be involved with. So instead of doing Student of the Month, we're going to do, look at, they came up with the idea of looking at character traits using bear paws, and this will be a quarterly reward where those students will then get that gift certificate from Robert Hollis. We'll still have him come in and do all that. It just won't be monthly, it'll be quarterly. So that's a little bit different. This last week, well, to start with, we have our guiding coalition in place. This is our RTI stuff that I'm talking about now. Currently, we do have our guiding coalition in place. That's our group of teachers that's kind of not necessarily in charge, but leaders within, especially their grade levels, to go back and help us implement things if we need to make changes, things like that. Currently, our big push was to get those Tier 2 kids the help that they needed. And that's the stuff that they're learning right now that maybe they missed in class this week, and we want to get it fixed before it goes any farther than this week. And so that Tier 2 instruction, we have it actually taking place right now in the middle school, and we're really excited about that. Our grade-level teams have formulated their own plans, so each grade level looks a little bit different, but they're a lot the same, too. And so they've had the ability to kind of develop those plans, and it's taking place, and it's really, really good to see the kids that need the help getting with the teacher that can help them during the school day. And that's already taking place, so I'm excited about that. The 8th grade's the only team that hasn't yet got that going, and they're going to get it going next week, I think. So, maybe this week. I can't remember, but it's coming. And our goal there is just to catch the kids who are failing to master a standard as quickly as possible. That's our goal. So anyways, yeah, I think I failed to mention that Picture Day is tomorrow, too. So don't forget that.
Good job on, I really like the kids going in through the Grimes, gets them off the street, and man, I was getting, ever thought of that, genius.
Well, Joe Bob.
That's, that's really well.
It's worked really good.
Looks real good.
That was, that was Mr. Cockner.
Man, I hate to call him a genius, I could...
Thanks, don't worry.
Sorry I said that.
Filling in for Mr. Rogers. Into the elementary, enrollment in front of you, 492. I think that's down a little bit. It seemed like we were enrolling all kinds of kids prior to school starting, but I think, you know, a couple of classes are smaller. The week prior to school starting, we kind of have our open houses in phases. We start with kindergarten usually. It was August 15th on a Tuesday. Get those kids in there without all other kinds of traffic. It was good, it turned out really good. Had a lot of involvement, a lot of kids showed up. Then that, the 17th of Thursday, that was all open house, all of the grades. There was also a lot of involvement there. Those teachers worked really hard that week prior to really doll up their classrooms to get everything completed, and everything usually looks great on the walls. Preschool open house, since they started a week later than we did, was on a Thursday, the 24th. Obviously, once again, it was a great turnout. Those teachers that we have there in the preschool did a wonderful job with those kids and those families. Spirit Week was this last week. There was a lot of involvement in the elementary building of all of our students. It was, it was cool to see a lot of the teachers get involved. Some, they get really involved. The costumes are awesome, the colors and everything. No, they do a wonderful job and have a lot of school spirit. The fruit and vegetable grant is back. I've never been in the elementary building when that has taken place, but Mr. Rogers talks that, I mean, it's been, it's been in place for at least a week, and there's a lot of good fruit that are choices. They have certain, you know, certain fruits, certain days. The oranges on Tuesday, the first Tuesday, were really good. I'll be honest, I had one of them. But yeah, it's Tuesday through Friday every week. They have a list, they have a schedule they go off of, and it's nice for those grade levels to get a snack, a nutritious snack in between, you know, their lunch or before their lunch, whatever that is. Kind of splits the day up. We just had grandparents today, this last week, on Thursday. If you weren't there, there was a huge turnout. And we did it a little bit different this year. I'm not real sure on the feedback. It wasn't a breakfast like normal in the past. It was after-school hours, it was on the playground. Thank goodness for good weather. And you saw people everywhere, and the grandkids everywhere. I think, for the most part, I think it was a lot of good feedback. Like I said, I don't know that just yet, but there was a lot of comments, a lot of positive comments. And I think the teachers on the teacher side of things, and then those things are also positive comments. So it was a big turnout. I know Miss Jean took a lot of pictures. There was a lot of people there. It looked like, you know, you turned around, looked everywhere, there was people everywhere. They enjoyed the hot dogs. They got hot dogs, chips, and a cookie and a drink. So everybody that was there, they got something to eat. Were fed. Thank, thank you to Regina and the cook staff to stay after hours to fix that stuff because we were rushing coolers in and out, you know, filling water jugs, those types of things. So that's always appreciative. They stated earlier, homecoming was last week, the homecoming parade. It was a good turnout. You know, the kids always line the streets, they catch a lot of candy, love sitting out there. Yeah, it was fun. The parade was fun. Picture Day is tomorrow also, just like all the other buildings. There's rain forecasted, so we'll have to figure out where to put as much as PD class goes, where the pictures will be set up, so we'll figure that out. And then midterms are September 18th. It's already here. So that's all I've got for the elementary building.
All right, thank you. Mentioning open house, kudos to Pearson Girl. I can't remember her first name.
Ally.
Alan, that set up the, all the different entities that came and set up outside for anybody that could use those services. It was, it was a good, good deal. And hopefully, we can continue that in the future. All right. Ms. Barker?
I don't have a lot. I'm like, I feel like I'm in overload today. We, our enrollment for special ed, we've had 29 new special ed students this year, and it just seemed like the ones that we've gotten have come out from the woodwork somewhere. They're pretty needy, and we've had to make adjustments based on that. But our teachers have adjusted and up and rolling, which is fantastic that they're that flexible to do so. Today, we had Professional Development Day as well, and we spent our special ed staff spent the day with four people from compliance, from DESI. I know I had mentioned before that we were chosen, and it wasn't a negative thing, but we were, they were, they used our district for training purposes. There was no negative outcome for them being here today. However, it was very, it was a very good, a very good PD for our staff members. Basically, what they did is took a student file, just a random student file, and looked over it for the past three years to see what the educational benefit of that child was, if they may continue to make progress. Was it aligned to disability areas, aligned to the services that they received in their evaluation information? But we, you know, we tracked that data from three years on a particular kiddo that we've had in our special ed program, and it was one of our own students. So it was, it was really neat to see it all broken down that way and then how we can make improvements on making sure that we do a better job describing, you know, the definite needs of the kiddo that we have and, you know, things that probably didn't occur to us so much. When we're talking about maybe you had a weakness in written expression or something along those lines. And some of the pointers that the DESI people had is that, you know, sometimes I think that you're expecting more out of a special ed kid than you are a gen ed kid because when you have a high school student that you're expecting to write a paragraph with correct capitalization, punctuation, and that type of thing. And gen ed students aren't even really expected to do that because they have tools that help them do that. So, you know, what we really put our focus on in preparing kids to be independent adults, you know, if they have tools that can do those things for them, should we shift our focus on other areas? So it was, it was a really good full day. And we had a, it was, you know, from start to finish of the day, and we left with some parking lot activities and follow-up on things that we're going to do on our side of things to help us improve in that process as well, so.
Is that 29 new students?
29 new special ed students.
In addition to what we already had?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the total of your numbers?
We started the year, we started the year at like 154, and we've had 29 on top of that, so.
Is the percentage up?
Um, whenever they figure a percentage, it's based on overall population. So if our enrollment is pretty for the district, then, you know, it'll kind of, the percentage will kind of even out, too. So I know that when we did our attendance count for last year on attendance day, we were at like 1445 for the district last year, and I'm not quite sure where we're at now. It sounds like in buildings that enrollment is up as well. So I'm sure that our, our percentage may have went up some, but if our enrollment's up, it'll probably kind of average out.
Is the push-in that you're using now, is that, are the teachers liking you pushing in? Or is, how's that working out?
I think we've done push-in in middle school and high school, I think, pretty consistently for a long time. Elementary, it was new, and it's kind of been something that we've been able to put in place for the past couple of years. There's been a lot of change going on in different buildings, so we've put it off and put it off. I think we've made adjustments on what we're trying in the middle school. Some of it's working, some of it hasn't. And so we've made more adjustments and, you know, trying to fine-tune the process. And, you know, we just may not be at the point where it's going to be successful at this point, and we may have to regroup and try some other things. But I think that's the wonderful thing about our plan is that we can be flexible and try it. And, you know, you know, it may not be perfect this year, and we may not get it completely off the ground this year.
For elementary?
Yeah, for elementary, but we're going to keep trying, and hopefully, we can eventually get to that point. I know in some of the earlier grades, it seems to be working a little bit better, like kindergarten and first grade maybe a little bit better than some of the older grades. So I think it's just kind of a teacher, group of kids they've got. There's so many variables that go in it because it's based on the individual kids' needs. You know, if you've got a group of kids that are very, very needy, then push-in may just not be the thing for them.
Is that distracting to the class when you push into the class to the other children that young?
I don't think so. With the little guys, I think it's more of a help. I know in one classroom in particular that we've got a couple of kiddos in there that, you know, that they're very bright. They just have some regulation issues because maybe they've not had that exposure in their home where they've been taught how to sit and how to pay attention or how to, what to do with themselves. So having that reinforcement, you know, it doesn't take away from the classroom teacher, but having another individual in there that can, you know, like, help with that piece of things. I think in the earlier grades, it's working pretty good for that piece of it. But, you know, like I said, I think it's a learning process, and we've got, we've got adjustments to make, and hopefully, it'll get, get better at some point and, and better for everybody, you know, across the board and the kids in general. So I think our, I think all of our focus is just, you know, making sure kids get what they need right now, so. Thank you.
I'm going to hold it. What'd you think, you thought our total enrollment was last year, 14 something?
1445. That was on our, I just know that off the top of my head because I was writing a grant. And on our attendance count date last fall, that's what it was on that date, 1445.
My addition, one bit less of...
You mentioned 29 new, are those new enrollees or identified, some newly identified from last year?
They're new enrollees for this trip, yeah. Yeah, we would have already counted the ones that would have been identified last year. They're just new students that have enrolled. They're just new students that have enrolled, have enrolled in our district or come back to our district that weren't here last year that, that had special ed services.
All right. Nolan?
Well, um, I don't have a whole lot. You guys have spent a lot of money on the CTE building, so I thought that I would get some quotes from our students about what they think of the CTE building, so you guys can get some positive reinforcement about all the money that you've been spending on it. So Clayton Wake says, I think the CTE building is a very nice addition to the school. Looks very clean and it's refreshing. It's nice to have some new classes that haven't been available in previous years. My only complaint would be there are no blinds currently and the bus situation getting from the high school to there is inconsistent time-wise and I agree. I have been five minutes late to college algebra every single day or more. So it would be nice if we could get the bus thing figured out. Colton Stolba says.
Do you hear the transportation?
Leslie, I'll talk to you afterwards, I guess. Colton Stolba says he loves having access to programs and the equipment that weren't accessible in the main high school. It's nice having multiple rooms to use rather than just the one classroom. Mason says, it's truly wonderful. And that's about it. And then Ally Martin says, I think the new CTE building is a great addition. They give us space that we can work solely on projects for the specific classes rather, rather than just getting Mrs. Lee's room. Like she does the very, the stuff. We get to focus on the projects that we have in the designated space and we don't have to pick and choose what projects we can take on. So they, all the students seem to really be enjoying that CTE building. And that's all, that's about all I have.
Well, thanks Nolan, that's, that's good. Then I guess we're ready to go on to our student advisory council.
This group we started last year, when we started with the student representative to the board, we, we jumped on that as well and, and formed a group that we meet with about once a month or so and then if they need to come to us, we can, they can come to us. And it's been very good. Five of them are not here. There's eight total. That's what happens when it's a day without school. I know one had to work and, and some other things, but.
Go ahead and take it away. Well, we, the first thing that we did really last year when we started the advisory council was talked about the weighted grades policy. Now, I don't know if you have really paid attention to the weighted, uh, this was one of the first things I brought up here was the weighted grades. It wasn't the greatest addition. I mean, like, it wasn't great, set, the way it was set up, but I think that the way it is now is a lot better. Weighted grades, I don't really even know how to begin. It was just like, it was just set up to where like if you took a weighted class, you barely got any like additional grading for that. Like it was like four point zero zero one five or something like that for taking the weighted class. Now it is five point oh, right? If you take those classes.
Yeah, based weight, yeah.
Yeah, based five point oh grade scale, which is really nice. Those are all the classes that are going to be.
And that'll be applying to, uh, incoming freshmen, I believe, either this year or next year. We obviously can't apply it to like the current, like seniors per se because there would be classes that were weighted when some took them and unweighted when others, but, um, that'll be really good for all the incoming students, I think. Create a lot more opportunities.
Yeah, the weighted classes that are available to incoming freshmen are down at the bottom and then the ones on top are still available to sophomores and seniors, yeah.
So that's starting this year or next year?
It, it starts with this year's freshman. And so the, it changed from a point zero two weight to a, a one point weight.
Yes.
Now I'll give kudos to this group. The original intent of the, the weight back in the olden days when it was put on there was to basically break a tie for valedictorian and salutatorian. There was really no weight to it other than it, it broke ties. So you had one valedictorian and one salutatorian. So these guys were able to lobby and, and get that bumped up to where it actually, um, helps their grade point average significantly and encourages people to take those classes.
And they worked, after this was brought up, they worked with a, a committee of teachers to kind of sort through and, um, didn't just sit back and let the teachers do it. They were able to express their, their opinions and.
And then another committee we worked on was the field trip attendance policy committee, uh, committee. And we, uh, worked on what kind, uh, what we wanted to base our field trip criteria on, attendance wise. It had originally been based on, you know, what percentage of attendance you had. And the issue was that, with that was that, um, you could have a low attendance percentage and have like doctor's notes say, but doctor's notes don't apply until you've missed a certain number of days. So you could have a low percentage and no way to fix that. So we decided to, uh, have that changed to hours owed. So anytime a student owes hours now is when they will not be able to go on a field trip as opposed to having a low percentage due to extenuating circumstances that they couldn't prevent. This just kind of helps kids who really didn't have an option in missing school.
Okay, the Branson School Tour, uh, something that we did last year. Basically what we just, what we did was we went with the high school faculty and toured the Branson School just so we could get an idea of like things that they do that we could improve on and, uh, things that we do that they can improve on. Give feedback to them. So one of the things, or some of the things that I noticed was they had some pretty impressive facilities, but that is because they are a very large school. Very large school, so I mean, that's not really anything that we can, you know, do anything about. But I noticed, uh, for us, that our club involvement was a lot better than theirs is. Basically their clubs would just get together like once a month and they would prepare for their district and state and national events and that was about it. If you look at our clubs, you know, like SFA for example, they are always doing something in community, community. FBLA, they are always trying to do something in community. SCCLA, we're always trying to do stuff. And they, they just are kind of like, yeah, we'll do our district events and we'll head home. So that was something really nice. Those students pretty much led the tour and I think that was a pretty cool thing because I, I think that we should have something like that, like what it looked like, you said this in the meeting, was they had a set, like set of students that kind of knew the history of the school and also knew the layout like back of their hand. So if somebody came in that was new or like we were coming in, they could give a tour and like answer questions. So that is a really nice addition that I think that we could maybe look at doing. And they also had a lot more class options, which is another thing that just kind of goes along with being a bigger school, but like they had meteorology class. So that was pretty cool.
So one thing we've been discussing a lot this year is, uh, student involvement and participation in things like clubs and just throughout the school in general. And so we've kind of been brainstorming a lot, um, in meetings about ways to increase that participation. We've looked at, you know, using the app and I think that's been a great resource for us so far this year. And then also like, you know, promoting clubs through videos and flyers and that sort of thing.
Uh, we talked about guest speakers for about a couple of seconds in the last meeting. Nothing too outrageous. We were, we just, uh, we talked about what the reason for having a guest speaker come in and what they can do for the student body and how they can help the student involvement. We talked about maybe bringing in a guest speaker to try and get the students like more like wanting to come to school, but we decided that we would leave that to the clubs, so, you know. Like FBLA, we're talking about bringing somebody in soon. It's just pretty much so we can get more student involvement, so kind of with Hannah and Hannah's last slide. And then issues and topics that are back that were brought up at the last board meeting. Uh, school store foods, senior having an open campus and the student parking lot. Those are three things that were brought up by the students at the last thing. Just brought about any of them. And that's pretty much it. So if you're looking for something for the Esther Fund, the student parking lot.
One thing you fail to do is introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Nolan Perkins.
Emma Spence.
I'm Maddie Ford. We're all three seniors.
I got one question. Back on that, uh, was it school trip policy deal? Is that war policy? Is this also the?
No, that's the building.
Building policy, okay.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very good. Go on, that's back. All right, um, who's going to present the career ladder?
I am, yeah. There's really not a lot to present. Career ladder was an old, um, system that Missouri had for, for many years. Back when I started teaching, career ladder was there and by the time I hit stage three, it, it went away because of lack of funding. They brought that back last year. Last year was the first year kind of re-entry into career ladder. We took part in that. Part of being able to take part in that is you have to have a career ladder plan that's approved by the board. It's a sixty forty funding from the state. We were really, um, fortunate that our previous superintendents have kept, uh, we called it TIPSa. Tiered, professional, something, something. Basically the local, it was a local career ladder. On a much, on a smaller scale, we were still paying teachers to do extra activities and get professional development. So with that, when the state said we're bringing back career ladder on a sixty forty, we already had the forty budgeted with TIPSa and they came in with the sixty, so we were able to up everybody for career ladder. So it, it was a no-brainer for us to do it. It's been very, um, successful. Our teachers really appreciate it and it's something that, that we can do to, to give a little bit back to our teachers and they're making themselves better, uh, with professional development. They're helping out, um, with student activities and things that we need help with. So that's kind of the stages there, um, and there's, there's very little change from last year's, uh, career ladder plan. But tonight I would just be asking the board to approve that for next year, that we continue to do that program.
Those hours, uh, what qualifies as an hour? Doesn't there have to be some student contact?
Student engagement is, is the biggest thing. Those can range from, um, taking a college class. Tutoring is probably the, the majority of the hours is tutoring, um, you know.
Art club and all the.
Sponsoring a club, um, you know, helping kids in a variety of things after school. As long as it's outside of school hours and it's helping kids, then it's probably going to be eligible.
Now, this might be a stupid question, uh, brought up sponsoring a club. Do they not get a stipend anyway?
Well, if they get a stipend, they don't get career ladder. It's one or the other. So if you're getting a stipend for it, you don't get career ladder for it, if that makes sense.
So there's a lot of good things that come from those hours that are spent and, uh.
Yeah, it's kind of a win-win and in my opinion. That's all I have on career.
All right. Any other questions about career ladder? All right, um, Mr. Small, again.
Yeah, I'll run through our, uh, transportation so far. It's, other than the first day, it's been pretty smooth. The first days of school are usually pretty hectic just because there's a lot of changes on all the buses. We have fourteen routes. Um, currently only have one open that we fill with subs. I think last year when we started the school year, we had three, three open and we had fifteen routes. So, um, the drivers have done a great job. I've, uh, me and Tommy and, and Mr. Kenny, we, uh, brainstormed a plan. I've kind of tried to dissolve a route because we had one retiree and then we had a sub quit, I mean, quit for good. Uh, he'd been with the district, Orville Coleman had been with the district for a long time. So had Sharon Presser. Um, so instead of creating another opening, we kind of dissolved it and her route was the easiest to do that with, we thought. And so far it's, it's changed a few students' times where there used to be in, you know, like the second one off the route. Now they're, might be, you know, more middle to end of the route just because of the way we are running the routes. So there's very few instances in that manner, but, um, yeah, it's been, it's been going pretty good. Like I said, I went from fifteen routes to fourteen routes, so I'm going to have one opening in the morning.
Our transportation people are phenomenal. Logan does a good job, like you said, Tommy and Kenny and, um, did a nice job to consolidate those routes down and, and save the district a little bit there. This is a yearly thing for the board to approve the bus routes as well.
And how are your numbers running on those?
There's only one necessarily, I mean, we, I mean, obviously the first week or two weeks we, I consistently try to count or have, you know, administrators or other buses, you know, in the morning try to count. There's not really this, there's maybe one that's pretty loaded, uh, one or two maybe, uh, but we're doing it. Once we get to a certain number with, you know, older kids, then we need to figure out something different. But we're not overloaded by no means. Um, it's just practically comfort for who's on the bus maybe in some instances. But.
Mr. Small?
About the same amount as we had last year. I don't know the actual number, but there are a lot of people willing to sub at the moment. You know, a lot of them work for this, work at the school, so that's, makes it even easier, you know, they're there already and we have a few outside.
It's easier, it's going better this year than what it did last year.
I think, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, yes, it's, it's, it's going pretty smooth. You know, and like some of those, some of those drivers, you know, they took on some more stops. It added more time to some of them and thank goodness for them working around because, you know, they're getting used to certain times with their routes, uh, for years. And then, you know, maybe one driver, it added ten, fifteen minutes to their, to their route. And it happened to a few, but, uh, thank goodness they're willing to work, work, uh, work to do that, um, to have those kids. And it makes it, the way we, we consolidated it, it makes it a little bit more sense as to where the areas are. We're not double backing as much. We're not crossing sixty-three highway as much. So it does make more sense the way we're, you know, because I don't like crossing sixty-three multiple times if we keep doing that, so.
Mr. Small related to me the other day that about how they had students add, well, to the, our extreme north part of the district and extreme south part of the district. So anytime you add one out there, that's significant time to those routes. And maybe only pick up one or two kids to do it, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, on top of consolidating, yes, the kids were epic, lucky stated. And every quarter of the district, it seemed like it was like, ooh. So they weren't there last year, so.
And we do have one of the largest geographical districts in the state, so it's, it's a challenge.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Small. Comments from our guests. We welcome our guests. We'll go on to items for action. Our first item, uh, I would, uh, receive a motion to approve the career ladder plan as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed. And then, uh, I would receive a motion to approve the transportation routes as presented.
All seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, and I would, uh, receive a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, will be your call.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
All right, so back in, uh, regular session now.
No further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Okay, motion to debate second, all in favor?